Good evening. This meeting of Monroe Township Board of Education is now called to order. I'd like to ask our student board member Nicholas Starney to lead us in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we go on, I'd like to ask everyone for just a moment of silence. If you could stop where you're standing, just a moment of silence for the victims of that tragedy in Orlando. Thank you all very much. Be seated. Mr. Koroski, if you could have a roll call.
Ms. Arminio. Mr. Braverman. Ms. DeMayo. Mr. Kaufman. Mrs. Kolpanowicz. Mr. Nostine. Mrs. Carino. Mr. Ryback.
Here.
Mr. Russo.
Here.
And Mr. Rutske.
Here.
Mr. Board President, you have a quorum present this evening?
Thank you.
In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted June 10th, 2016, at all schools, The Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the Municipality.
Thank you very much. Could move to approval of minutes? I need a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Court of Education meeting of April 13th, 2016.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? We could vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions, recusals? Motion carries. I need a motion for the approval of the closed session meeting of April 13th, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Second, thank you. Okay. Any discussion?
Second.
I heard that. Any discussion? No? We could vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions or recusals? Motion carries. It's now my pleasure to move through the recognition of our retirees. Dr. Kozak?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going, Mr. President, I'll be going down to the floor to recognize our retirees. I'll ask you to join me and knock you out. So, good evening. It gives me great pleasure to recognize the men and women who are about to announce their names for their years of dedicated service. And when I look at the number of years that these men and women have given to this community, to this school district, and to the students, and the community, and the staff of our district, what I really have trouble understanding is when I look at some of the retirees with maybe 30-plus years, they had to start when they were four years old. They had to. They looked so young. But they, they looked like they're ready when I've talked to them, and they certainly, it's well deserved for all the work that they have done over the years. So with that, just so you know, for procedures, how we're going to do this, we're going to call each person by name. We have a few of our retirees who were not able to attend, and I will announce their names at the end. But I ask that when we call your name, that you stand up to thunderous applause, I mean, you stand up and come to the front, and we have just a little token of our appreciation that we would like to present to you. Dr. Albeck, always on top of things, suggested that I read the resolution, which is absolutely appropriate. The resolution reads, "Whereas the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, has been apprised of the retirement of..." And I'll go through all the names after that. "...be it resolved by the Board of Education, Township of Monroe, County of Middlesex, and the State of New Jersey that the said Board of Education wishes to acknowledge its appreciation for the service rendered to the students and citizens of Monroe Township..." And then the person's name. "...whereas it is desired to express recognition for the many years of faithful service, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe that it does hereby express its warm appreciation and heartfelt thanks for the dedicated and faithful services and the performances of his or her duties, and of the integrity with which he or she carried out his or her responsibilities and regrets the loss of such a respected employee. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this Board of Education, and that a copy be given to the retiree, passed unanimously by the Township of Monroe Board of Education at its regular meeting of June 15th, 2016." And with that, we will start. Our first retiree, Miss Diane Allender, please come to the front. Mr. Daniel Baviel. Ms. Karen Costaldo. Ms. Carol DeVito. Ms. Susan Falk. Ms. Adele Fennessy. Ms. Adele Hughes. Mr. Jacob Kushner. Ms. Teri Madropola. Ms. Yuan Amir. Ms. Marie Pepe. Ms. Susan Rosati. Ms. Eve Solo. Ms. Sandy Talbot. Ms. Sandy Biligus. For the retirees who could not attend, I would just like to read their names, and we can offer a round of applause to recognize them. We have Grace Legina. Robert... Absolutely. Robert Serto. Maureen Jordan. Mary O'Leary. And Michelle Rockoff. I respectfully ask that you allow us to make a slight change in the order of our presentations because our girls' basketball team has a game tonight, I was told. And they are on their way to the game, so I said that we would put them up a little further in the agenda, so I hope, you know, please accept that. Okay. We wanted to recognize the students who have achieved an academic, or an athletic, or an artistic achievement, and we formed a committee that developed the criteria because so many students are, you know, they achieve at high levels throughout the year. So it was very difficult, but we looked for students either, you know, by themselves or in a group that have achieved either a state, county, or a national recognition. And when I say county, it's like a county slash state recognition. So the following names, I'm going to ask for the students to stand and be recognized. I do have certificates, but for the sake of time, we will hand out the certificates at a different time, but I would ask that you stand and be recognized by everybody in attendance. So first, I would like to start with our girls' basketball coach, Lee Voughtman, for being nominated the Greater Middlesex County Coach of the Year. We would also like to recognize our entire girls' varsity basketball team. Would you please stand to be recognized? Our girls' basketball are the Central Jersey Group Four Champions. And coach and girls, we understand, so whenever you need to leave, we understand if you need to leave before the end. Next, we have our girls' varsity competition cheerleading Grand National Champions. Could those girls please stand? There we go. That's it. Okay. Next, we have our Special Olympics of New Jersey Bowling Gold Medalist. Chechi Madu and Jacob Barrero. Next, we have our Shriver Cup Unified Team Gold Medalist. Again, Chechi Madu, Casey Phil... Filio, I'm sorry. My apologies. Caitlin Mascali and RJ Reynolds. The following are, we have some individual students and some pairs of students. We have Monique Legosbee for making the All-State Wind Ensemble. All-State Jazz Band was Graham Kozak. No relation. All-State Chorus, Gabrielle Legimenez, Peter Toto, Taylor Viana. And we have Ivy Tran for first in New Jersey in the DECA Food Marketing Series category. Next, we have Nicholas Ryan and Sam Weiss, first in New Jersey in a decade in Financial Services Team Decision Making category. Emily Wo, first in New Jersey in a decade apparel and accessories marketing category. Nicholas Starney. Oh, yes. For first in New Jersey in a decade Financial Consulting Presentation category. We have Paul Everhart, first in New Jersey in a decade Professional Selling Event category. Palmer Stoli and Owen Regan, first in New Jersey in the FBLA Future Business Leaders of America Computer Games Simulation and Programming category. Shane Patel and Karen Deep Ronhawa for first in New Jersey in the FBLA Management Information Systems category. Our Model UN High School team. We have Karen Deep Ronhawa for the Management Information System category. And Owen Regan for the FBLA Computer Games Simulation and Programming category. And the Model UN High School team Outstanding Delegation. We have, let me, there's certain categories in there. Jason Delina and Karina Lenawala earned premier first-year delegates in their committee. Amy Williamson won premier delegate, and her team earned premier brief in the courts. Shriana Parik won premier county research paper. And two students, Nicholas Starney and Abenav, I'm sorry, Reddy, were selected to Kona, the Youth Conference on National Affairs, which will be held in North Carolina this summer. This highly regarded conference, yes. The conference hosts all-stars from the Model UN and youth and government programs from around the country. And last, but certainly not least, our National History B Regional and National Competition Regionals First Place Winners from State Competition. And those winners are Audrey Chen. Joseph DiCola. Owen Doherty. Grace Fox. Krish Rupapara. Akash Sholka. And Gabe Toto. For all those students, we will make sure that you get your certificates. Next, we have our Support Staff of the Year recognition. And I would ask, I would ask that when I call your name, that you please come down to the front. From Oak Tree School, we have Ms. Nancy Simon. From Mill Lake School, Mr. David Teschian. Next, we have Sandy Machula. Sandy's not here? Okay. We have Ms. Alice Hansen from Barclay Brook School. Mr. Christopher Gross from the Middle School. Next, we have Baca Girilakowski from Brookside School. Next, we, from Willand School, Iggy Rosmussen. Next, we have Sandra Baravecchio. Next, we have Sandra Baravecchio from Alpe Gore School. Next, we have Jerry Sullivan from Transportation. Ms. Florence Muniz from People Personnel Services.
Okay, at this time, we have a special presentation for you. Tyler Mahon, a senior at the high school, was the keynote speaker at the Dare to Dream Student Leadership Conference held at Middlesex County College on May 12th of this year. The Dare to Dream Student Leadership Conferences highlight strategies and information to prepare students with disabilities for college and career. This year, there were nine different conferences held in the spring throughout the state. Each conference features keynote presentations from accomplished students and young adults with disabilities who have demonstrated exemplary self-advocacy and leadership skills. So I'm proud to ask Tyler to come and share his speech with us.
Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone's having a good night. So this is, again, this is a speech that I spoke at the Dare to Dream Student Leadership Conference, basically to just encourage others with disabilities to kind of not let that stand in the way of them going to college and, I guess, proceeding on in life. So, here it goes. I have been categorized as a person with a disability. However, for me, it is all how you look at it. I don't like it to be called a disability. I like to refer to it as a challenge. I did not get to choose the challenges that I have faced. They have chosen me. Most of the time, I've been able to deal with my challenges and face them head-on, which has made me a stronger person. I realize people are always going to judge you. Some that bothers me, not so much. Early on in life, it wasn't always easier for me. As you can see by the way I walked up to the microphone, I don't walk like everyone else. I was diagnosed with cerebral palsy at a very young age. My parents were told by different doctors that I would probably never walk. I was very fortunate that once I had the right doctors, I began physical therapy and occupational therapy and had them both up until the fifth grade, along with wearing braces to position my feet properly. I have been receiving special education services at the high, special education services since I was in preschool. At times, growing up was difficult because of the way I walked. Kids didn't want to be friends with me, and I was bullied off and on throughout elementary and middle school. I also had delays in early reading and writing skills and received resource center instruction in Language Arts and Math. So throughout the years, I have faced physical challenges and had specific learning disabilities in the areas of basic reading skills, reading comprehension, and math computation. Being in the resource room for Language Arts had also prompted kids to make fun of me. But once I got to the eighth grade, the remarks stopped. The kids realized I was just like them, just a little different in my own way. Today, I have many friends and have been very successful in school. I think I have always had incredible self-determination. I am goal-oriented, driven to achieve all that I set out to do. And I believe that I have always had an incredible work ethic and have studied more than most students. I have never used the accommodations in my IEP as a crutch to get out of doing work. As a senior, ready to graduate, I mainly use extra time to complete tests and a calculator for math. This year, I am in all general education classes. I have participated in activities that I am very proud of. All four years of the high school, I've been on the school golf team. I enjoy the sport very much and hope to continue playing in my leisure time. I have participated in the Police Explorers as part of the Marlboro Township Police Department and have been able to achieve the rank of captain. I've been with the program for three and a half years. As a captain in the program, I oversee 35 explorers between the ages of 14 and 17 and assist them at events when necessary. For example, the Marlboro Day or the Marlboro Township Soccer Tournament, we were crowd control and traffic assisting the police officers. During the last few summers, I have attended the Police Academy as an explorer and I received an award for being the most determined recruit. I was very fortunate that the cerebral palsy only impairs my left side. Therefore, it did not stand in the way of me getting my driver's license. For the last year, I have also worked part-time at Wawa as a customer service associate. Finally, one of my most proudest achievements was this year having provided instruction to the younger students as part of the LEAD Program, Law Enforcement Against Drugs, at the middle school in town. I am passionate about police work and I asked my transition coordinator to help me connect to the detectives that teach the LEAD Program at our middle school. Being an excellent self-advocate has helped me do well in school and achieve my goals throughout high school. Next year, I will be attending Brookdale Community College to further my education and have an eventual career path in the area of law enforcement. When I spoke at the Dare to Dream Conference, I left the students with a challenge. The challenge was as follows. We all know that one kid that sits alone at lunch, go over to him or her, begin a conversation. You never know where it could take you. It could blossom into a good friendship. And remember, don't judge someone just because they are different from you. And always pursue your dreams. Always pursue your goals until your dreams become a reality. Thank you.
Okay, now it gives me a great pleasure to take over the microphone. I'd like to call our student board member Nick Tharney up to join me over here. Nick, come on up. You know, Nick's been a board member here, exemplary board member, for a couple of years. But that's not all he's into, as you can tell. I'd like to read to you some of his accomplishments. Nick was a member of FBLA, DECA, National Honor Society, Kona Delegate Selection, Youth in Government, Model UN, student board member, intern at Legislative District Office, Monroe Township Youth Advisory Committee, American Legion Jersey Boys State Delegate. Will major in business and focus in law. I believe he will be attending Rutgers University. What can I say? Is this some active, this is somebody we're all proud of. Let's give him a round of applause. Nick, it's been a pleasure. Congratulations again. Okay, and now we're ready for the recommendation from the spokesperson of the Student Growth Advisory Committee. I've asked Mr. Douglas Poy to represent that committee. Mr. Poy?
Thank you, Mr. Ryback. At your request, I wish to report to the members of the board, to our administration, and to the public the consensus of the Student Growth Advisory Committee that the board develop a referendum which will address the need for adequate space for the anticipated increase in students in the near future. The advisory committee was comprised of a cross-section of the community, which included parents, teachers, administrators, senior adults, students, and community business people. We began meeting in January to develop a common understanding of the current ability of our schools to house our students and an understanding of the anticipated increase in students due to new housing. Our process involved sharing of concerns and providing input for consideration by our board and administration. It is important to note that the anticipated growth was based on a demographic study using housing and student population specific to Monroe. From the beginning of the committee's work, it was made clear that all decisions rest with our board. We are asking that the administration share with the board the many ideas and suggestions which came out of our meetings as they proceed, as you proceed with your deliberations. It is our understanding that the central administration will share their findings and thinking with the board's Building and Grounds Committee. Furthermore, after appropriate deliberations, that committee will ask the board for authority to contract an architect, financial advisor, and other pertinent professionals, so that specific plans and costs can be developed. The Building and Grounds Committee will further deliberate in an effort to advance a proposal for consideration by the Finance Committee. Any recommendations coming from these two committees will then go before the board for further deliberation and a decision on authorization for a referendum. At this time, we are pleased to present the three major ideas generated from the work of the Student Growth Advisory Committee. And I believe that that will be displayed via PowerPoint. Gentlemen, back, do we have the presentation?
Brian, do you have one form that has the list from the Student Growth Advisory Committee? Do you have a PowerPoint from that?
In the absence of a PowerPoint, I would ask that someone at the board's table, Dr. Kozak, if you would read the three major ideas that were generated by the Student Growth Advisory Committee.
Yes, Mr. Poy, I will read them, thank you. Option A is to add a ninth-grade wing to the high school. The sixth grades would move to the, or remain at the elementary schools. Build two new elementary schools. And all elementary schools would be K to six schools. Option B, add a ninth-grade wing to the high school. Build a fifth, sixth-grade school. Build one new elementary school. And all elementary schools would become kindergarten through fourth grade. Option C, build a new middle school, seventh and eighth. Build two elementary schools. And split the high school so that 11th and 12th grades would remain in this school. And the current middle school, which was formerly the high school, would house the ninth and 10th graders. And all elementary schools would be K through six, kindergarten through six.
Thank you, Dr. Kozak. Clearly, I think you can see from those three ideas that the district is faced with not a simple obstacle or challenge. In the past, they've had to decide about building one elementary school or they've had to decide about building a new high school. But these options show that they're having to take into consideration what to do about the high school, what to do about the middle school, what to do about the elementary schools. It's a much more complex problem than I recall they're ever having faced in the past. Our Student Growth Advisory Committee trusts that our work will be useful to the various committees and the board as those bodies work to address the physical needs for classroom space in the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poy. I'd also like to publicly thank all the members of the Student Growth Advisory Committee, Steering Committee, for all their hard work and dedication. Now I have a resolution I'd like to read. I hereby move that the Board of Education, one, acknowledge receipt of the recommendations of the Student Growth Advisory Committee, and, two, authorize and direct district administration to engage in a limited design study for potential referendum project subject to further deliberations and recommendations by the Building and Grounds Transportation Committee and the Finance Committee. And ultimately, for deliberation and consideration by the full board. Well, I'm not finished yet. The Board President, Superintendent of Schools, and Business Administrator Board Secretary are hereby authorized and directed to take all necessary steps to implement this action on the Board of Education, of the Board of Education. We have a second. I'll second it. Ms. Arminio?
Well, there's no discussion?
Yes, I'm sorry.
First of all, we really couldn't hear the resolution down here clearly.
Do you have a copy of it there?
If you could read it again?
Certainly, I can read it again. Let me try one more time. I hereby move that the Board of Education acknowledge receipt of the recommendations of the Student Growth Advisory Committee, and, two, authorize and direct district administration to engage in a limited design study for a potential referendum project subject to further deliberations and recommendations by the Building and Grounds Transportation Committee and the Finance Committee, and ultimately, for deliberation and consideration by the full board. The Board President, Superintendent of Schools, and the Business Administrator Board Secretary are hereby authorized and directed to take all necessary steps to implement this action of the Board of Education. It was moved, we have a second.
I'm sorry, I have a hearing problem to begin with. The acoustics in this room are not very good. People sitting next to me that have good hearing can't hear very well.
Are there copies, I was told you had copies of the resolution. You don't.
I can't hear either.
Could we turn the monitors up as well, please?
I'd like to say that the Buildings and Grounds Committee discussed this last night. And we've come to a recommendation of our own. And I think you are usurping the authority or the, the, the decisions that we made at the Buildings and Grounds Committee. I think there's time for this. I think it will come along, but I think this is premature.
Could you explain to me why, Mr. Bradman, why you think we're usurping that?
At our meeting last night, we engaged in an extensive discussion and review of the Student Growth HAD-HOC Committee process. And their request, and we requested that the administration return to the Building and Grounds and Transportation Committee with a recommendation for facilities expansion. I think you've taken it further than that, and it's... I think you've taken it further than that, and I don't think we should be doing any more at this time. So if you proceed with that motion, I will be happy to vote against it.
I think it's necessary for a motion to pass so that we can authorize the administration to deliberate and then officially send things back to the Buildings and Grounds Committee. I think, you know, from what I understand, deliberation was about a process, not about any kind of a plan for development of schools. Ms. Arminio.
I would, the first part of the resolution, acknowledging the receipt of the recommendations of the Student Growth Advisory Committee, I accept that. And I agree with Mr. Braverman that there was a discussion, there was ample discussion, about authorizing a limited design study for potential referendum. I'm not sure what that means. I'm against authorizing the spending of money unless we know in what direction we should go. I think if we start engaging architects and they come up with plans, and then we reject the plans, we're just going to be spending money that we shouldn't spend until we have an idea of which option, or closer idea of what option we're going with. So the second part of the resolution, I think, is premature.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If I may, at the Building, Grounds, Transportation Committee, a different resolution was presented, one that authorized the use of professionals, including the architect, financial advisor, bond counselor, and engineer, to facilitate administration, of course, at a cost of professional fees. That was not approved and recommended at the committee level, and therefore, this resolution that you have before you tonight is simply authorizing receipt of the recommendations on behalf of the Student Growth Advisory Committee, and, two, authorizing District Administration to engage in a limited design study which will not engage professionals and presumably will not have outside costs. That was the recommendation of the Building, Grounds, Transportation Committee last evening.
Yes, Mr. Arminio.
Okay, so I need clarification. Is number two authorizing any expenditure of funds?
No.
No.
So there's no expenditure of funds in this resolution?
Correct, as recommended by the committee.
Any other question? Yes, Mr. Kaloponowicz.
Who will be engaged in the limited design study for potential referendum projects? Because it was my belief last night, also at the Buildings and Grounds Committee, that we would not be authorizing anybody to do anything until the administration comes to the Buildings and Grounds Committee with a plan for building out. We had said that we would not be authorizing any money to go to anybody for a plan when we don't even have any clue yet what we want to build. Do we want to build an elementary school? We have three options, none of them have been given to the Buildings and Grounds Committee. So, yes, the Buildings and Grounds Committee, the only thing they authorized yesterday was to come back to the Buildings and Grounds Committee with a plan.
Mr. President?
That's it. So I can acknowledge receipt of this Student Growth Committee report, but I cannot, I could not accept number two.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Number two, and I just want to clarify again, I don't mean to be redundant, directs administration, superintendent, the assistant superintendent, the director of facilities, and myself, to engage in a limited design study amongst ourselves with the data accumulated by the work of the Student Growth Advisory Committee, to come up with an idea to further deliberate at the Board's committee levels, specifically Building, Grounds, Transportation, and Finance Committee, and then ultimately to come back to the full Board for a discussion. But without the second part of this resolution, nobody is authorized to go forward in this endeavor at all.
Quick question.
Mr. Kaloponowicz.
So if it's all being done internally, and there's no expensive any money, sorry, if it's all being done, whoa, if it's all being done internally, and there's no official expense of money, why do we have to give you approval to have a chat?
Have what?
A conversation.
Mr. President? It's because this endeavor of coming up with an idea for a potential solution to the student enrollment stress that will be forthcoming, based upon the projections that we have, is certainly beyond the scope of the emergent responsibilities in either of those aforementioned job responsibilities. It's a separate project that we would like memorialized in the minutes that's beginning at this juncture.
So there's no, let me just clarify something, Mrs. Kaloponowicz, because I know you raised this up. There is no spending of money because we need, the Buildings and Grounds Committee will get some information from administration after they deliberate, and then Buildings and Grounds Committee deliberates, and if they, when they come up with a design that they think might be workable, that's when they ask the Board for permission to go out and hire professionals like architects and engineers. So there's no outlay of money right now. Mr. Nostine.
Thank you, Mr. Board President. With regards to the resolution on the second part, correct me if I'm wrong, the way I see this going down would be that the District Administration would basically, I see where maybe the sticking point here is this design study. If we could maybe change that, I'm not proposing it yet, but if we could change that to a cost study for the potential referendum project, based on option A, B, and C, I think it could be maybe more palatable in the sense that now we're going to be looking at the cost of each option, and then once we then have those estimated, rough, rough at best, I understand, costs, then that would go then to the BGNT Committee, where basically they would have more information of the three options to hopefully work up an option before we spend money actually going out for a, quote, "design study." Is that maybe where we're headed with this? Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Gorski.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. With regard to Mr. Nostine's comments, in order to have a cost study, something of the scope of A, B, and C presented earlier, it absolutely will involve experts, it will involve an architect, it will involve an engineer, it will involve a financial advisor. The cumulative expertise of such a grand scope of that type of initiative would have to involve professionals. What this resolution, again, directs is a very general concept idea to be put together by administration, to be further deliberated and refined at the Board's subcommittee levels.
Any other question or comment? Were you able to hear down there? Ms. Arminio, did you hear?
Maybe we want to repeat that a little while, if they couldn't hear.
Not all the statements are clear, that's...
Beg your pardon. I'll repeat what I said. To Mr. Nostine's comments, in order to have a accurate cost study, how much would option A, option B, or option C cost? It absolutely will involve the use of professionals, including an architect, who is very well-versed in current cost per square footage. Also, the specific design of the school is imperative in that calculation. The financial advisor will have to be engaged to determine how that fits within the district's amortization schedules and the predicted ratables that will carry the burden of the levy. Engineers won't be involved, so to have a cost study will absolutely involve the use of professionals. At this juncture, this recommendation does not call for that, it simply directs administration, and once again, that's the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, the director of facilities, perhaps a director of transportation, and myself, to collaborate and brainstorm some general ideas on how to handle the incredible enrollment growth that was predicted and studied at our Student Growth Advisory Committee level, and then go back to the Board's subcommittees, specifically Building, Grounds, Transportation, Finance, to further deliberate and refine those concept ideas.
Can I ask a question? Why do we need a resolution to do that?
Once again, to memorialize the initiative which is beginning to take place on the heels of the Student Growth Advisory Committee, and to direct administration to begin working the number of hours that it will take to perform that beyond what is currently in our job responsibilities. It's a memorialization and a directive for us to come up with a concept idea, to take back as a concept to the subcommittees of the Board. Without such a resolution, there is no action to be directed or taken. The Student Growth Advisory Committee concludes, and we resume our normal business.
Any other comment? I'd like to say something, though. You know, what we're facing with is a very large situation, very large problem that we have to deal with, and I know all of us, because we've expressed this, want to be as exact as possible, although we're learning, it's not quite an exact science, but we want to be as effective and as efficient as possible. There's also a time factor, and we're sensitive to that. We discussed that. The developments are going up, and it takes longer for us to build a school than a developer to build a development, because there's a lot more rules and regulations, obviously necessary ones that schools have to follow. But this resolution seems to fall in line, at least in my opinion, and I think the administration's, as we talked about it, with what came out of the Buildings and Grounds Committee yesterday. It's not spending any money, it's really just asking the, accepting the information, the statement from the Student Growth Advisory Committee, and authorizing the administration to deliberate that and bring that back to Buildings and Grounds for further deliberation. Nobody is authorized to hire any engineers or architects at this point, it's simply a matter of input and deliberation from Board members and the administration.
Well, then I think you could have said, "Thank you for their findings, and we will proceed with that from here on." I don't think you need to memorialize it.
Steve?
Yes.
Just a quick question. If I'm not mistaken, one of the superintendent's goals is to do this. That's your memorialization, because it's one of his goals. So then he has the power to pull whoever he wants from within the district to that end. So I guess I'm still confused, if there's no money expenditure, and it's one of the superintendent's goals, why do we need to, in effect, rememorialize the memorialization that we need to do this? It seems it's a little overkill.
Well, I'm not an attorney, but I think we were advised that we need a motion passed, a resolution to memorialize this so that we will be able to get forward. I don't know, Mr. Gorski, did you get that information from our attorney?
Yes, this resolution was prepared in conjunction with the attorney.
So that might help answer the question, Mr. Kaloponowicz. I just, you know, want us to proceed legally and, you know, do everything as transparent and above board as possible. I hope we answered your questions. I mean, this is not, there's no cost here, it's strictly authorizing the administration to take the statement from the Student Growth Advisory Committee and deliberate so that we can finally formally start this process. Delaying is, I think, detrimental to the students and the taxpayers. We need to start working on this to make sure that whatever plan we come up with is one that meets, well, best meets the goals of this school district. So we have a second. I think we can vote. I want to make sure there's no other deliberation. Ms. Arminio, did you raise your hand there? Did I see?
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. We can vote.
Mr. Board President?
What was the recommendation from Building and Grounds from last night?
Mr. President? The recommendation that was presented to Building, Grounds, Transportation Committee last night included a Board authorization to engage professionals to refine this concept idea further. And by professionals, again, that's the architect, engineer, bond counselor, and financial advisor. So that when it went to the committee level, Building, Grounds, Transportation, or Finance, intelligent questions like what this project costs, what is the square footage, how many floors do you foresee, can be answered more professionally than a raw concept idea. But we are pleased to serve at the Board's desire in this endeavor, and if that start of this process is just the development of a concept idea by administration, that, again, is what this resolution directs.
But we can do that anyway without this resolution, right?
Mr. President?
Yes.
The, I believe, after the Buildings and Grounds Committee last night, we were trying to merely put the wording that the Buildings and Grounds Committee recommended into the wording of a resolution, and I guess, more importantly, it's not that I need a directive by the Board to do the work, I already know I'm going to do the work, as well as, you know, Dr. Albeck, Mr. Tagg, and Mr. Gorski. I believe the more important part was to put into, memorialize or put into the minutes that the Board accepted the findings of the Student Growth Advisory Committee. To me, that was the more important part of the resolution. But in the discussions last night with the Buildings and Grounds Committee, there was two, there were two parts to it, and I think that's what we were, not I think, that's what we were trying to capture in the resolution, that's all. No cost, we were trying to capture exactly what the Buildings and Grounds Committee requested. I think it's just the wording of the resolution that's causing concern, but the intent, and after discussion, hopefully everyone understands that, the intent is merely to accept the findings of the Student Growth Advisory Committee, and for the administrative team to begin work on the three options, and looking at those, and to take that information that the administration team develops back to the Buildings and Grounds Committee. And I believe that was the intent of the Buildings and Grounds Committee. Again, I think it's just the wording of the resolution that's causing concern.
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Arminio.
One final thing, because on the...
Could you talk into the mic, Ms.?
Sure.
I can't hear you too well.
Wow, okay. And I just want to be clear, I think I am clear now that we're directing the administration to provide guidance in the plan before we start doing anything else, but on the, tonight's Board agenda on page 58, we are saying we have an architect of record and a civil engineer of record, that's K and L, and if we approve this, is that we're not necessarily approving to engage them yet. I just want to make sure that these two resolutions don't compound our issue with the...
Ms. Gorski will answer that.
...resolution on the table.
Yes. Ms. Arminio, the resolutions for the architect of record and the other item that you referenced are general district affairs. For example, a pipe breaks in one of the schools and has to be reconfigured regarding the services of an architect. We have the authorization of the Board, then, to call the architect and begin the repair. I'm just making that up.
Right, just, right.
Those resolutions tonight are for general business purpose and would not be used for the magnitude and scope of a bond referendum project. And if I may add to some of the comments before, I, you know, as the minute keeper of the Board, I can go back to the minutes when this high school was built, and I can tell you from start to the middle to the finish, how that process initiated, the initial seed idea, where it came from, how the members voted, where the authorizations came from along the way for the use of professionals, the bids that were accepted, and so on. Therefore, you know, I posed a question to the Board, wouldn't it be nice to begin this monumental process with this resolution which does nothing more than document and memorialize the start of this process on the heels of all the work and labor put forth by the Student Growth Advisory Committee?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, Mr. Gorski, you can vote.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes? Yes.
Mr. Braverman? Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Kolpanowicz?
No.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Mrs. Carino?
Yes.
That was a yes, ma'am?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
abstained.
And Mr. Rutske is eligible to vote on this, per our board attorney review.
Yes.
Mr. Board President, motion passes.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, everyone, for your questions, too, because we certainly want to get all these questions answered out in the open. I have to apologize one thing. In my excitement to give our student board member, Nick Tharney, his due credits and award, I neglected to have his report. So, Mr. Tharney, if you don't mind, let's give your student report. And Mr. Jamel?
Okay, so the first thing we have for today was, today was the first day of finals at the high school, and they're going to be going on until Monday. And then, two days after that, on Wednesday, is going to be the high school graduation in Trenton. And this weekend, the boys' state and girls' states delegates and alternates are going to be heading out for their week-long program in civic engagement, and they'll be back, I believe, on Thursday next week. There are some summer assignments being passed out throughout the high school for various AP classes, math classes, and language arts classes. Another thing happening over the summer is the annual Fly Camp, which is Falcon Leadership for Youth Camp. It's run by a few of the gym teachers in the high school, and it's a two-day-long summer leadership camp. One more thing is that the high school recently implemented a system for students to keep their iPads over the summer if they pay their technology fees before the school year ends. Also relating to the iPads, there was recently a district app for the iPads rolled out to all the students. And on the app, students can see Board of Education meeting dates, general announcements, and the tech department can push out announcements to each student's iPads. And there are a few other features in that, too. And before I give it over to Nick, I want to give him a really big thank you for being a great mentor this year. I couldn't have done it without him, because I would have had no idea what I was doing at all. And I have a really big shoes to fill next year, and good luck next year in college.
Thank you. All right, thank you. The Drama Club is already planning auditions for the upcoming showcase next year. The Youth and Government Chapter, and I know Ateeb touched on this last meeting, had its conference a while back in Trenton. Even though they weren't here today, there were many students who were recognized at the state level for that, including outstanding statesman awards, legislation awards, including one student who's recognized among four of approximately 600 students. There were several premier awards, like premier delegate, premier first-year delegate, premier brief, as well as a couple delegates elected for Kona from that as well. And the high school amongst all of the other chapters in the state was recognized as a premier delegation. Finally, not finally, as we touched upon the different, you know, awards, DECA, a while back, had its International Career Development Conference, where some of the students who are featured here today were able to compete amongst students from all 50 states, the territories, and approximately eight different countries. And FBLA's national competition will be coming up as well, to enable students to compete in business, finance, and marketing-related categories. The senior award session was recently held, which, thanks to members of the community, different organizations, they were able to recognize a large group of students for their accomplishments, and we'd certainly like to thank the community for their generosity. Some of the classes within the high school have been working on a voter registration campaign based on information provided from the League of Women Voters due to the recent change in state law. On the 10th, there was a Relay for Life event, which was an overnight event that raised awareness and funds for the American Cancer Society. And finally, as my term as a student member on the Board of Education comes to a close, I would like to acknowledge the incoming student board member-elect, Stefani Scalisi, who will be serving alongside Ateeb next year. Of course, I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to serve as a representative of the student body. I truly believe that this position provides not only a unique learning opportunity in civic engagement, but it also provides a participatory role in the governing body that perhaps has the greatest direct impact on our daily lives, from board meetings to initiatives like the Student Growth Advisory Committee or the committee that evaluated the one-on-one technology integrated learning initiative at the high school. So it has certainly been a pleasure and an honor to work with such a great board and to represent my fellow students. So that being said, Mr. Board President, this concludes my final student board member's report. Thank you.
Thank you much, Mr. Tharney and Mr. Jamel. It's been a pleasure having you as a colleague on this Board of Education. Thank you. And now, we have our special education program reviewed by PCG Education.
President?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to, as we're getting the presentation set up on the screen, just like to introduce our three panel members from PCG Public Consulting Group. First, we have Dr. Jennifer Meller, who is the PCG Senior Consultant and former Director in Specialized Services for the School District of Philadelphia. We have Will Gordillo, who is the PCG Senior Associate and former Executive Director responsible for exceptional education for the Palm Beach County School District. And we have Lauren Primpecki, the PCG Data Analysis and Project Support, former special education teacher and case manager for the School District of Philadelphia. And I would ask that you come up on the stage. We'll give you a cordless microphone so that you can present from up on the stage. If you're, can you, would you, can you see from it? Would that be better?
I think that might, is that cordless? I think you can just take that.
I don't have any hands.
Yeah, we have cordless microphones up here.
I can't get it out. Okay.
We have them up here.
Do we have?
Up in the front?
It's in here, right?
To the side of the screen.
Good evening, everyone. We'll just wait a second. I think some folks are going to move down to be able to see their presentation. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here tonight. We're going to spend the next 20 minutes or so going rapidly through our report. I believe the board members have a copy of the full report and the executive summary. So, as Dr. Kozak mentioned, my name is Jennifer Meller. I work for Public Consulting Group, and we were hired by the district to do a review of special education and really determine the strengths and the opportunities for improvement around this program and to offer recommendations. So the purpose of the study was to understand the effectiveness and efficacy of your current programming and to really go in-depth into understanding the policies, procedures, and practices, and their impact on student outcomes for students with disabilities. The final report is organized into six different themes, the first one being multi-tiered system of supports, which we will refer to as MTSS, and the referral and eligibility for services process. The final report also has a significant section on demographics, where we're looking at student information about the district and comparing it to comparable districts in New Jersey, and also some state and federal numbers. Same thing with the achievement for students with disabilities. We have extensive data in the final report. We also have a section on educational settings, or least restrictive environment data, indicating where students with IEPs are being educated, if it's in the general education classroom or if it's in a separate setting. The bulk of the report is around teaching and learning, so how are students with IEPs accessing the general curriculum and what supports and services they receive or should be receiving to improve the programming. And the final section is around support for teaching and learning, so the organizational structures and procedures that need to be in place to ensure that students with disabilities can learn most effectively. We started working here in January. This has been a six-month project where we've talked pretty regularly to the district, I would say almost every week. We spent a significant amount of time here in February, doing lots of interviews and focus groups. We talked with parents, community members, board members, students. We did school observations, and that was really to immerse ourselves into the program and understand what it looks like here in Monroe Township. Then we went off and we studied a lot of information about you. There was a lot of information provided to us, I would say hundreds of documents that we analyzed, and information that we pulled together to develop a draft report. And then, we're here. We presented, we've been presenting all day today. We were with the leadership team this afternoon, the Curriculum Committee of the School Board a few hours ago, and now here this evening, to ensure that everyone understands the scope of the study that we did and the recommendations that we're making. And then, we'll come back in a few months as a check-in, just to see what support the district might need, if there are questions about the recommendations and how they've played out here will be a resource in the next couple of months. This is a slide that summarizes our methodology and how we go about this kind of work. It's very much a research-oriented activity, where we are coming to findings and recommendations based on three different areas of data collection and analysis. The outcome analysis is looking at student achievement data and trends of student placement. The organizational and program analysis component is looking at how you've documented policies, or within policies, and procedures, and descriptions of programs, so that we get a basic understanding of how this comes together. And then, the research and practice literature is pulling in resources, pulling in information about national trends, so that you, as a district, understand where your program is, fits into those national trends. As we've mentioned to a number of the groups we work with today, Monroe Township is a high-performing district. The recommendations that we're making have to do with how to raise the bar even further and have better outcomes for students with disabilities. We want to make sure we highlight a lot of the strengths that happen here, because there are many, many. These are big buckets, but the full report does have an extensive number of strengths that the district has. The first one is the consistently high expectations for all students. This is something that it really stems from the inclusive manner that the district treats students with IEPs, welcoming them into clubs and having teachers be very oriented to how to differentiate instruction in the classroom. There's just a very high expectation and a culture of acceptance here. The second piece is around the positive post-secondary outcomes for students. Monroe Township has one of the highest graduation rates for students with disabilities that we've seen. It's at about 91% for the last year. That's nearly 15 to 17% higher than the state target for that indicator, and also for comparable districts. So it's really a point of pride here. There are a variety of interventions for struggling learners. We'll talk more about that, Will. We'll talk more in-depth about an intervention system and what it looks like and what components you have in place here already. It's a very effective special education department that you have. They cooperate and clearly communicate with all the other departments, and it's a reciprocal relationship, and so very smooth operations here. There's a continuum of placement for students with disabilities. And what I mean by that is, over the past few years, the district has had an active interest in bringing students back from out-of-district placements. In order to do that, there had to be a growth of programs built internally to support students with varying needs. And so there's a, because there's been an emphasis on it, there are a lot of different options for students here. And just to expand further on the collaborative culture piece, it's very clear that the leadership team here works well together. They know this is a huge component of their work, and so there's partnership among all the different areas of the district. There were 17 categories of recommendations. As you will, the board will see, there is a lot of detail that goes behind each one of these. We're going to move quickly through them tonight, because we don't have a significant amount of time, and we're going to go in-depth into a few of them and kind of move past others. But they range everywhere, everything from the intervention support system to transportation to developing a manual and procedure. So this will be the framework of the rest of the presentation. Turn this over to Will.
Thank you. So as my colleague stated, we really looked at 17 clear areas that were areas that were specific and need of some action and recommendation, and really focused on, you know, what would be the best way to have some action steps that would move the work forward in those particular areas. As has been mentioned, you're a high-performing district, high performing in many measures in your academic achievement of the students, general ed students, but also when compared to other students around the state, your special education students are also high-achieving in those measures. And as a district, it's important to note that every district in the state of New Jersey is measured by their performance on the state-required, state-performance indicators. And on those indicators, your district is performing at the highest level, which is meeting requirements. But again, you know, in every area that you meet requirements, there's always opportunities for improvement. So we want to focus on those opportunities for improvement that we saw as a result of this review. Number one is multi-tiered systems of support. And the district has already strong structures in place that have been implemented with response to intervention at the early grades, and that is a good foundation to build upon. The district also has the INS, or the Intervention and Referral Services Process, in place for students that are referred for special education, testing and evaluation, and then eligibility. Where we see that there is a strong need is really in integrating and unifying those processes under what nationally is happening across the nation and in the state of New Jersey, and unifying them under what is called multi-tiered systems of support, or a process of providing supports to all students in two areas, the academic areas and the behavioral areas. And being able to really provide clear co-instruction, targeted interventions, and intensive interventions for those students that are struggling, because when you are able to raise the bar for those students that are struggling and improve their growth, then you raise, continue to raise the bar for a district that's already doing well and could continue to improve in outcomes for all their students. So we're recommending that you build on the RTI process and the curricular frameworks to develop and implement a comprehensive district-wide system framework that addresses the academic areas, the behavioral areas, and the social-emotional areas for all students. And, you know, we highlighted in the key findings, and I think, you know, hopefully you've been reading some of those as we go along the way, that, you know, there are areas that obviously would need some attention. And so those key findings are areas to really look at in building that framework for response to intervention and unifying the existing systems that you have under one umbrella. The second one is evaluation. And the evaluation process is very tied to what's happening for all students, meaning the instruction interventions that are being provided to students. When you look at, the evaluation process is really what guides the students that come in through the door and become eligible for special education services. And when they become eligible for special education services, they become eligible under certain disability incidence categories, which are listed there. We looked at your data and compared your data in those incidence categories with state and national to see whether, you know, you were within the standards or underneath the standards that are there for benchmark comparison. And when we looked at those, the areas that really rose as areas that showed a little discrepancy based on your data was that you seemed to identify more students in the speech and language area and other health-impaired areas in your classification rates than the state and the national average. And you also under-identify or have less students identified as specific learning disabilities and/or emotional disturbances- disabilities and/or emotional disturbances than, again, the state or the national rates. And lastly, that certain subgroups of students, for example, African-American students are more likely to be classified as having an intellectual disability. And more white students tend to be classified as students with emotional disturbances. Data tells stories, and stories sometimes make us dig into the why reasons. And so the purpose of looking at data is to really see what causal effects might be in place and how you can develop some strategies if the fact that those elements in your data are data points of concern based on the analysis that is done independently. So, you know, again, it's important to highlight that what happens in the forefront of multi-tiered systems of support, meaning the supports for all students, really will have an impact on that process, meaning there may be less students that come in the gate into special education, because they're getting the right supports in general education, which perhaps they weren't getting, and that's why they were being referred. But again, the concentration on evaluation is making sure that, you know, the right students are being evaluated and getting through the processes for the right supports that are necessary. Data collection is also integral in another area of our recommendations. And really, it's looking at, you know, what is happening in the district with the use of data. And, you know, we saw that there was a lot of variances in the reporting processes that were occurring with the data that is available and the procedures that are used for that process, and also in the use of the data in order to make instructional decisions for students. The good news is that, you know, we heard that you had been implementing already a really important assessment platform as part of that initiative to really work and use your data, which was management by, no, it's Performance Matters. And so that's being implemented, and so that really will help with the next pieces of the action plan, which is designing a system of data collection and analysis that will enable the superintendent, administrators, principals, and teachers to review student growth and identify patterns and solve problems and make decisions. So that that data is accessible and usable at the classroom level, so that the teacher is informed on what to do instructionally for students at the school level, so that the school leaders and those responsible are addressing the needs of the students that are struggling based on the data, and at the district level, looking at those snapshots across the districts and the schools and school communities to address those students that are in need of supports and interventions. Preschool is also an area that rose as an area of opportunity to improve, because it is, again, a measure in your state performance plan, and one of your indicators is around preschool. And when we looked at the state data, it appeared that in the six data elements that were being reviewed by the state as reported by the district, the district did not meet the requirements in five of the six. Only one of those was the one at the very top on the right functioning within age expectations, and that is in the area of positive social-emotional skills. In all the other areas, the district when compared to the state did not meet the requirements. So, here, you know, our recommendations are on expanding the capacity of the preschool programs for students with disabilities, on providing more inclusive placements, including providing services and supports to children in community-based childcare programs. And that effort, you know, would be able to address, you know, some of the pieces that are impacting your data. The good piece here too is that you already have the foundations for what reports up to the data, which means it's a strong curriculum. And you have high-scope curriculum which is being implemented in your school district, in your classrooms with the students, and that curriculum is highly aligned to those areas that are reported. And so strengthening and working with that curriculum and the instruction that is happening will really help to affect change in the data that is out there. And opening more opportunities for kids in inclusive settings will also do that. Clicker problems today. So, I believe the next one is inclusion? Right. And you'll see inclusion twice. One, this one here in the general education setting. And what we're showing you here is, you know, what it looks like for students by settings in the Monroe Township. And when we looked at your data across settings, we saw that we really have less students in the school district spending time in general education settings, special education students, than you see at the state level. So, that's an area of need. But the state, I know, also has a challenge and has been working very strongly in addressing the challenge that the state has had with LRE and with the districts that are targeted in that particular area. So, in the area of inclusion in the general education classroom, our focus is on, you know, looking at providing supports and services in the general education classrooms to support access to rigorous Common Core instruction. And that is done again, you know, by looking at underserved students in general education, students who might be in other, some of the other settings that you see there that might benefit from inclusion, looking at the processes of the IEP to make those decisions, decisions to move more students into general education for primary instruction with proper support, and looking at those frameworks that support students for instruction in that area. Vertical transition was another area of need. It's already strong in that you already have processes. If you look at the very last bullet of the key findings, which is the one that I want to focus on, there is a strong process for preparing students for grade and school transitions. And it, you bus students, you take them to the school sites that they're going to be going to, to become familiar with the sites. There are processes for developing the IEPs for the students that are transitioning and identifying the needs that would be appropriate for children in those settings. But many of the staff that actually are doing the work at the school level did not express an understanding of the planning process. So, our recommendation is really strengthen the plan you have, you already have, clearly communicate that plan, and ensure that those that are in the field doing that day-to-day transition, vertical articulation for students are well-versed in that process, so that it really happens smoothly. And inclusion model, again, that one ties into what we had previously, and that is to develop supportive structures that allow effective co-teaching teams to create efficiency and partnership that helps build investment. So really, that one is focusing on the process you're already using, co-teaching and strengthening co-teaching and strengthening supports for those areas. And transition programs is another area. It is an area of strength, because you have a lot of them, but like any strength, there are always missing links. And so the recommendation is to develop a district-wide team consisting of key stakeholders to review the current programs and how they can be improved and expanded and where there are missing links for services that tie into outcomes for students to create those. So, Jennifer?
Thank you, Will. I know we're rushing through these. We want to make sure we get to all of them very quickly. So, out-of-district placements, I mentioned previously that the district has had an initiative over the past few years to analyze if students really do belong in out-of-district placements. We want to commend them for that, but also make sure they don't take their eye off the fact that you always have to be considering who should be in out-of-district placement and continue to build internal programs. The organization, we've mentioned this briefly as well, that there is a strong department here that's viewed as fair, responsive, and effectively managed. We don't use those words in every district. That is certainly something very unique to Monroe Township. Doesn't mean there isn't work to be done, and our recommendations, there are a lot of them, but the key ones are around MTSS, focusing on instructional outcomes for students with disabilities, and then ensuring that students are served in the least restrictive environment possible. Case loads and support was a, this was an extensive part of our study to determine where ratios fell for staffing here. The two we want to point out are around special educators and paraprofessionals. Special educators, the ranking here is that for every special educator, they serve 8.4 students with disabilities. That's the third lowest ratio of the 53 districts that we've looked at. So it is something to think about in terms of how resources are used and could be an artifact of the fact that students are coming back from out-of-district placements and you need to have more teachers internally. Same thing with paraprofessionals. The ratio is nine to one, which leaves the district ninth in terms of lowest percentage, or lowest ratio of paraprofessionals to students with disabilities. The other part here is to emphasize that there is a process for documenting caseloads and workloads. It just needs to be more transparent and in a written format. Around paraprofessional aides, our focus here was around ensuring paraprofessionals are part of the process, that they understand where they can best be used in the classroom in supporting students, and that our focus here is on ensuring that you have the appropriate supports for students, but there's also a plan to pull those, to fade those supports away as students gain independence. Professional development is a key component of the district here. It's part of the culture. There are a significant number of offerings, and so our recommendation is to continue to expand upon them and think of lots of different ways that teachers and others can receive professional development, perhaps via technology or blended learning options. And throughout the report, there are recommendations of additional kinds of professional development topics to offer. That's what we would recommend here, is to continue to expand. Wow, this is finicky. Okay. Transportation, we understand there have been some significant concerns around staffing this year, making sure buses are going, the right supports are in place. What we recommend here is that there be a liaison between parents and, between parents' communication and the transportation department and the special education department to ensure that parents are getting the right communication and the timely communication about any concerns they have with transportation. Parent and family engagement was another big focus of ours. It certainly was reported that parents and families moved to Monroe Township for the strength of the special education programs here. It's, there's a belief that the programs are strong and that there's still more outreach that can be done for parents to bring them together as a community, perhaps not driven by the district, but organized in a way that helps parents connect. We also really focus on the website and that there's an opportunity to provide a lot more information about programs, services, who to contact, so that parents can find out information ahead of time if they want to. Along the same lines of documenting procedures, we recommend documenting how policies play out here, not just the regulations, but how they come to life in the district. And there has been a framework started for this manual already. And the final recommendation has to do with ensuring that the district is holding itself accountable for improving results around students, student growth for students with IEPs. There certainly are documentation, policies around student growth, but they don't go into in-depth detail about what that means for students with disabilities. So the summary now is that the district has been working to prioritize recommendations, and the board is a key component of determining over the next one to five years, really, what's going to be allocated in terms of funding or personnel, and then how they will determine what's, how to hold themselves accountable, and so that the public will know the progress behind all the recommendations. I think that's it. Thank you for your time tonight.
Yeah, let me just appear. Thank you very much. Oh, sure. You want to stay up here? We'll ask the board to return to their seats and we'll open it up for questions. Allow me to thank you very much for all your work and your report. Okay, I think we can move now to, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see.
Unfortunately, this is the first I saw it, so I haven't had a chance to read it. But on first glance, I noticed that we talk about the, you talk about the IEPs. Do you delineate IEPs in terms of, when you looked at the study, like those children with minor IEPs, like a speech, compared to those with more pressing needs?
Well, you know, the IEP is individual. We don't delineate that. An IEP is developed based on the criteria, the eligibility criteria for that child, and the services and support that are needed. A kid with speech, for example, that's speech-only, that's very different than a child that is, you know, receiving more extensive support. We don't delineate for that.
Okay. And when you talk about the achievement gap between students with and without IEPs and reading math, how big is that achievement gap?
That gap is significant. And in the report that you will have, you'll see in the graph, the discrepancy that exists within your district for students with disabilities and students with, that are general education students. But again, that gap that you have in your district, I want to point out, is just as significant for just about every other district. They have, there's a big discrepancy in the gap of the performance, obviously, because a student does have a disability, and a disability does have an effect. You know, so that is a piece.
Guys, add in also that some of the charts will show that the achievement gap here. I think it's also important to point out that students with IEPs here compared to the state average, by far, you're trending from, yeah, right, from elementary grades up to eighth grade, you're very much above the state average. At ninth grade, it falls off, and the district is below the state average both in reading and math.
So, but when we talk about some of these IEPs and, like, children with developmental delays, how do we know that they can, that we can bridge that achievement gap or that there are some children that just will never make it? So, we're looking at, so, how can we know if that's a significant gap?
For the student? Really, the significant gap is really based on, you know, looking at the expectations, you know, the grade level expectations and the standard expectations for performance and promotion and grade-to-grade for students, and whether the student with the IEP, you know, how is the student performing? What are the gaps? And what are the supports and services that might be needed for that student in order for that student to access instruction in general education? Which is, again, you know, the primary place for instruction that is most aligned to a pathway for a student to meet the standard requirements from grade-to-grade.
But there are some students that can never meet those standards.
Correct. And we have, we have students that are, there are students with disabilities that are following a more modified standard. There are students with disabilities that take a different type of assessment, and, you know, they follow that pathway so that they get on a, it's more of a modified pathway of instruction, you know, and that doesn't mean that they're less than. That is what is right for them instructionally, and that leads to graduation for the students and links to post-secondary school transition outcomes.
And how do you account for that in the achievement gap?
The transition or the students?
Well, the modified?
Okay. Well, again, they're not equal. You measure them different.
Right.
So, you know, their assessment and their requirements for the assessment are different. And the assessment has levels of performance for students, so, you know, there are levels of performance that a student needs to meet in order to move forward, you know, with that. And the majority, really, when you look at the modified assessment students, or those students, what, data shows you that the majority of the students that are on the modified pathway taking the assessment are meeting the standards of the assessment and the instruction that is happening. Where the greatest gaps occur, the greatest gaps are in the students that are following the standard pathway for instruction and the expectation that they graduate with a diploma and move on to either college, you know, or vocational program, or, you know, higher learning opportunities.
So, if you have a mainstream student who is meeting the expectations, and then you have the modified student who's meeting their expectations, there's no achievement gap there?
The achievement gap that we have been talking about is based on the state performance assessment that is required for students, not on the modified.
So you're telling me that students who have modified, then are you not including them in the achievement gap?
They're not, for the purpose of how we are looking at the discrepancies of achievement between students with disabilities and students that are not disabled, general ed students, we're basing... general ed students, we're—we're basing it on the standard state assessment expectation, not on the modified assessment expectation.
So that's really not—but then you're comparing apples to oranges.
No, we're—we're comparing the like students, because as I mentioned earlier, you don't have a gap. There isn't a significant gap in the achievement of your modified students based on the standards and—that they're expected to perform on and the assessment that they're taking. Where you have your gap in achievement is between the students that are following the standard pathways of instruction and the state-required assessment.
Okay. So those modified are not in this statement that there's an achievement gap between students with and without IEPs and reading and math?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, if there are any other questions? I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I didn't see your hand come up for the questions. I apologize. Okay, now we can move to committee reports. Any committee chair ready to report? Mr. Kaufman?
Yes. In addition to discussing the Special Education Review this evening, we had three other topics that we covered. We had a presentation on the Technology Student Association, and sorry that the acronym is TSA. The program has to do with an engineering group that is going to be down at the middle school. This is going to be a new program that's going to be coming on board next year. We will be replacing an existing club or group with this program, and if anybody wants additional information, they can see Zach. There's going to be no cost to the district because there's a net—we're getting rid of one club and putting in a new club in its place. Let's see if there's anything else for TSA. Any questions on TSA? This one, not the TSA. Okay. We also have 13 students that are going to be participating in the Waxman Student Scholar Program. This is an engineering and bio—biomedical?
Yes.
Yeah. Engineering biomedical—
Thirteen students applied, two students were accepted.
Thirteen students applied, two students accepted. This is a program that's sponsored by Rutgers University. There is no cost to the district, and parents will be picking up the cost to transport the children to the program. And the other program was a adoption of a MAP software product, which is an online assessment tool that we will be implementing, I guess, next year, and the cost savings is going to be realized by work that had been done with consolidating some of our software licensing agreements on other products to get rid of products that we no longer use or found that we had similar or like products in other areas that did the same work. Did I miss anything? Okay.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Kaufman? Any other committee chair? Mr. Braveman?
We discussed the Barclaybrook Asbestos Removal Project and recommending the bid for the board tonight. The tennis courts upgrades, the two—there were two bids, and they were both—they were just both rejected. The Brookside PTO donation of basketball hoops, we accepted that, and we're recommending that to the board. And then there's been a sore connection with the Roqueen Manor that's been going on for about four or five years. That's finished now. They've gone other ways. And then there was a committee discussion relative to the use of professionalism for the pre-referendum process. I guess I must have left the meeting before that went on because I can't report on that.
Any questions for Mr. Braveman? Any other committee chair? Mr. Nossen?
Thank you, Mr. Board President. The Finance Committee met on Tuesday, June 14th. The first item that we discussed was the payroll provider. If you recall, that we had some issues with an old payroll provider that we'd been using in the district for some time. They decided that they were not up to the task, so we had a stopgap emergency situation, and we went with ADP. After several months, it was determined that they are not meeting our needs and they will not be able to meet our needs. Mr. Gorski and his staff was under a lot of pressure. They came up with another company called CSI, not to be confused with the TV show, but basically, it's a much better fit for the district. It provides the services that we really need, the reporting, et cetera, and more importantly, they're going to be able to provide this with all the requirements that the business administrator needs. Plus, to add icing on to the cake, their first-year costs are roughly 73% lower, and their second year costs are 91% lower. So it's actually a win-win. We're getting more of what we need for less money. The second item that we discussed was additional state aid appeal. Our district administration is—along with our board president, is working tirelessly to make sure that we get as much state aid as we can. It's not even as—as much as we deserve because we don't think we'll ever get that, pretty much, but we're constantly fighting, and we've been told that there is some extraordinary state aid that we may be allowed to apply for, and the administration, especially Mr. Gorski, is actively looking—looking into that. And that's it for the finance report. Also, there will be no lunch increase going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Nossen. Any question for the Finance Chair?
Can I go back—can I go back to a question for Buildings and Grounds?
Sure.
So I'm just curious with regards to the tennis courts with the bids failing. I assume the timing was going to be for the tennis courts to get done over the summer, I assume, while school's out, but—
I don't understand you. I'm sorry.
Okay. So the tennis courts.
The bids failing. Are they going to be—
The what?
The bids, since the bids failed on tennis courts. Will they be able to be able to do the—repair? Will—the tennis courts be able to be repaired this summer?
Oh, the tennis courts?
Yeah, tennis courts.
They think they might.
Oh, because I assume it can't get done during the school year.
Not sure.
No.
Could it get done during the school year?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Rutske, we received two bids on the tennis courts, and unfortunately, after attorney review, they were both deemed to have material defects. In addition to the material defects, which require a district dismissal, they were both over the amount that was in the budget. So we are going to rebid the project as soon as possible, but that's going to put a lot of pressure on the summer timetable.
So I guess that's my—my question is, is it something that can be done during the school year, or I don't know what season tennis is played in?
Unlikely. No, we wouldn't do that during the school year. Gym—gym classes also use the tennis courts.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Omenio, did you have a question?
Yes. The Policy Committee met on June 6th. There was really no agenda. It was sort of just an open discussion. We were not discussing any policies, per se. We did have a discussion, and we spoke to the administration regarding just some questions some of the board members had, and I will read them. We don't have answers on these yet. We're just reviewing some things, and we had just some open discussions. One of the questions was, can all positions be submitted through AppleTrack? AppleTrack for the employees seeking jobs in Monroe. AppleTrack is an internet system that people can apply to. The other question is, can AppleTrack notify, including those who are not selected for any interview, after the finalist is approved by the board? We're not sure. We know that AppleTrack gives some sort of indication that the resume was received, but we—we were thinking that it would be—it was just a question if the people who did not get a job were notified about it and got some kind of receipt based on that. And the third inquiry was, can the process of how employees are hired be put in writing? There's no policy to that effect. We don't know that a policy is necessary. However, we would like some kind of formalization so everybody knows how the process is done. So those are just questions. Again, there was no policy discussion, and we have not gotten any re—any answers to the questions yet. That'll probably be for a future policy meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Omenio. Any questions? Any other committee chair wanting to report? Not seeing anyone. We could move now to our public forum. This is the area where you come up to the microphone. Please give your name, address. You have three minutes. I'm going to ask you to please adhere to that, those three minutes, and you can only address items on the agenda at this portion. Anyone from the public wanting to come up? Just go up to the microphone.
My name is Charlie Lerman, 11 Durrell Drive. I was—I was on the Resident Advisory Committee, and I'm pleased that Mr. Ryback brought this resolution up to a vote. And the reason, to me, is obvious, that the process must get started, and it passed, and I'm pleased that it passed. What I do question is the no votes, and I question that because I'm not certain that the people who voted no fully understand the—the severity of the problem that we're all facing. So I would tend to think that semantics should take a backseat, and you should seriously start the process, especially when the initial process is not going to cost the taxpayers one dime. Now, I want to begin with what I prepared this evening. I will begin by stating that the municipal portion of the township budget is stated at 20%, and those officials responsible for the municipal portion, mayor and town council, have stressed this statistic before—the before their constituents. It is also pointed out that the school budget is responsible for some 60% of the township budget. It is my opinion—and I stress this many times before the town council and planning board—that decisions made by the planning board, town planner, and our elected municipal officials have negatively impacted the school budget. Thus, the 20% is not transparent. In particular, the present master plan, which was adopted about four years ago, has, in my opinion, called for out-of-control, non-age-restricted housing, thus putting a tremendous burden now on our schools as well as the education of our children. That plan calls for a tremendous number of non-age-restricted development. I do not believe that the school board had any input on the development of the master plan, which, if correct, is troubling. Wherever you drive through Monroe Township, one sees many signs advertising new developments, a direct result of the present master plan. In addition, the newly negotiated Affordable Housing Formula, which calls for every one unit of affordable housing, developer is allowed to develop four market-rate units, thus a four-to-one ratio, which compounds the burden. In my opinion, this was the best the town could do under the circumstances, and in my opinion, did a good job in the—in the negotiations. But we have to understand that this will result in significant non-age-restricted units, which will further burden our school system.
Mr. Lerman, yeah. Time is up. Can you finish in—
I have about a minute and a half, about a minute left to go. Can I please have an extra minute?
I can't—not—I can't give you another minute, but what I can do is, when the other speakers are finished, you can come back and finish.
Can I just—can I just add the summation?
Okay.
Okay, just one more paragraph in the summation. In summation, this school board has been dealt a very difficult hand, at no fault of their own. The master plan, which I spoke about, and the affordable housing, which is mandated by the courts, will put a tremendous burden on education as it presently stands. Some serious and probably unpopular decisions will have to be made by the school board. If given a choice, would not be made, but the facts speak for themselves. I am confident that the school board will seriously consider the education of our students as well as a keen eye on the taxpayer responsibility in the resolve of this monstrous problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Good evening. I'm Chrissy Skirby, 8 Seminole Court. On behalf of the Barclaybrook Brookside PTA, I would like to ask that you approve our request tonight, which was discussed at last night's Buildings, Grants, and Transportation Committee meeting to donate two basketball hoops and the installation of each at Brookside School. We strive to provide our schools with things that can further enhance the students' experience. These basketball hoops will be a great addition to the playground area for recess, as well as outside gym classes. Our mission is to give back as much as we can to our schools. With that said, I would like to take some time to address what I've experienced this year. In seven years being a PTA president in this district for two different sister schools, I have never had a year like this. This is the first year that I can honestly say that I feel there is a great division between the district and the parents and the parent groups. There have been roadblocks set-ups that set up that do not allow us to reach our full potential for raising money for our schools. For example, this year, the district has allowed the rec center to book every gym in every building every day from January through May. I was told that the district now has the parent groups at the same level as the rec center, and we can no longer bump a rec center basketball game. However, school events can, but we are not considered part of the school. This has caused our PTA to not hold events that directly put money back into our schools this year, while the rec center does not pay one penny of—to rent the space in our district. Furthermore, the schools send home flyers that they copy to raise money for charities, such as Jump Rope for Heart and Pennies for Patients. While I think it is great to teach our children about those in need and how to donate money, these fundraisers do not bring money into our schools. However, the parent groups were told this year that we could no longer use the school copiers. For most parent groups, it caused an issue because this expense was not in their budget. The middle school PTO does not have its own copier, neither does the high school. We are forced to pay a fee every month at the Barclaybrook Brookside PTA to rent a copier. This expense takes away from the money that we can be giving to the school, but again, we are told we are not part of the school. It is simply outrageous how we are being treated. We need to work together. Our parent groups are strong, and we need to come together with the district to pass the referendum that's coming down the pike. I am asking this board to please take a look and see what the parent groups do to support our school district and not alienate us. Dr. Kozak, when you met with us last July, you assured the parent group leaders that you could handle Monroe and the situation we were in. You asked us in October at our District Education Council meeting to give you until June, and you would have a plan to recommend to the board. I cannot believe that we sit here tonight, June 15th, and we still do not have a solid plan. We were given three options tonight. You were part of that committee. You should have—it should have been your responsibility to come and present a plan that came from that committee. We are no further along than we have been. This was the second ad hoc committee that's been going on for years. I was part of the first one with parent group leaders. This is the second one, and we're back to the same recommendations. Now we have three options. How much longer is it going to take until we get a solid plan in place? Because our—we are 1,500 students unhoused this year.
Mrs. Skirby, I'm sorry. You're out of time, but if you could wrap it up in just a few more seconds, I'd allow that?
Sure. We—we need to move forward quickly. We are out of time. We are out of room in our buildings, and our students are suffering.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Peter Tifano, 10 Catherine Street. My question is, does the—is the board considering moving the election back to spring so that the residents have the option to vote on the school budget?
We have not discussed that as yet and not prepared to make that decision at this time. Anybody else from the public? Yes. Good evening. Could you talk into the mic? Maybe it's not on.
Name and address.
And your name and address, please. I couldn't hear.
My name is—
Now I hear you.
My name is Tracy Valley, and I live on Lower Metropolines in Monroe. My question is, is the board considering changing the policy for kindergarten students regarding why— regarding widescreen testing? We currently...I'm here tonight because I was directed by Mill Lake School administrators that the board was going to be deciding on changing the date at which a child can enter first grade?
I couldn't make out what you're saying about testing. I'm sorry, the acoustics weren't good.
It's the entrance age policy.
I believe it's referred to as widescreen testing.
Okay. Just to make sure I understand your question, you're asking about the date for students to be admitted into the school district?
Correct. I was told that the board was going to be deciding tonight whether or not to change that date from October 31st to December 31st, and if they decided that way, then the widescreen testing would no longer be available for a child such as our own, who is on a first grade level but doesn't meet the cutoff.
Right. Is the town changing the date? It's putting a date in? Okay, just putting a date in?
Yeah. It's for students entering first grade, I think.
Okay. We're not doing anything with the date. No. I don't... No, I'm familiar with the discussion. I don't believe it's in the agenda tonight, but we were talking about changing the date for entering first grade.
Correct.
Right. But, no, I'm pretty sure it's in the...
It's not on the agenda.
No. No, it has been discussed, but no, it's not on the agenda tonight.
Okay. So no decision has been made to change that? Previous to tonight?
I just want to make sure that everyone's understanding what the change that's being discussed at policy. There's no change for students entering kindergarten. That October 31st date is still going to be continuing. So students must be five by October 31st in order to enter kindergarten. The question that's come up, and the question that's been discussed, is for students who have completed a kindergarten program outside of the district. Those students, up until now, have been tested to see if they are ready to enter first grade.
Correct.
It would be putting a date on that. So students must be six by December 31st in order to be tested for first grade, if they did not do kindergarten in the district.
Has that been decided?
That's, I think, the policy is...
It's on the agenda tonight for a second and final reading.
Okay. That's why I'm here. Okay, so that will be decided tonight?
Yes, my apology, I didn't quite understand.
That's okay. I probably didn't explain it as well as I could have.
No, that's okay. Yes, that is on the agenda. We had a first reading, the last...
Board meeting.
Board meeting, and tonight is the second reading of that for the adoption of that policy.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Sorry for not being able to hear. The acoustics were not good. Okay. Anybody else from the public? Seeing no one, we can go to the superintendent's report and recommendations. Dr. Kozak?
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, considering the length of all the presentations, I do not have a superintendent report to present, so I move that we move on to personnel.
Okay, we have personnel. Need a motion to approve items A through triple N.
So moved.
Do we have a second? Items A through triple N.
Personnel A through triple N.
They need a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. DeMayo.
Okay. Any discussion? Any discussion? I don't see any hands. I think we can go right to the vote. Ms. Gorski?
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes, to all, recuse on triple J, I think it is. I'm accusing out one of them. I got to look it up now. Sorry.
You could recuse by name if you wish. Mr. Kaufman, should we pass?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. We'll pass on Mr. Kaufman and come back. Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Mrs. Carino?
Yes, but I recuse for Eunice Fonseca, Ricky Delong, Douglas Dillon, and Robert
Mrs. Carino, would you please repeat the first name?
Eunice Fonseca.
Thank you. So noted in the minutes. Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Abstain.
Abstain on everything?
Yes.
Thank you.
Triple L, Mr....
Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
And back to Mr. Kaufman.
That would be triple L. Lou, lou, lou.
So am I correct to understand that's a yes on everything, but a recusal on triple L?
Correct.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Board President, motion passes.
Thank you. Can move now to board action. I need a motion to approve board action items A through K.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Anyone? No? Ms. Gorski?
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mrs. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Mrs. Carino?
Yes.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
And Mr. Rutske?
So I abstain with the exception of F and J, or I vote yes?
Thank you, sir. So noted. Mr. Board President, board action items A through K has passed.
Thank you, and now we're ready for the business administrator's report. Ms. Gorski?
Mr. Board President and members of the Monarch Township Board of Education, it is recommended that board action items A through double X be approved by consent roll call.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. President? Mr. Ryback?
I think it's A through double Y. Is that what you...
Well, also, there is a removal of something on the donation, Mr. Gorski?
Can I ask you to hold that one second? I just want to make sure that we're correct on the number of items.
Okay.
It is, in fact, double X. Ms. Arminio, did you have a comment?
There's...is it...I don't know if we're at that point. We have to remove one of the donation items from the agenda?
Yes, that was the confidential donation?
Yes. Where is that?
Is it the camera?
Yes. Which number is that?
I had it, and I lost it.
The camera and a monitor, I believe. KK.
All right, so Mr. Board President, board action item KK. Correct, Mrs. Arminio?
Yes.
KK. KK is an anonymous donation to the Board of Education that is being tabled. So the motion for board action items is A through XX with the exception of KK, which is tabled. And we have a motion by Mr. Nostine and a second by Mrs. Koloponowicz.
Right. And I ask for discussion. I don't think...is there any other discussion? I'm going to vote.
Mrs. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Br...
And am I recusing on...are we all the way to the end?
Okay.
Not yet. I'm recusing on the travel resolution.
Recusing on the travel resolution, so noted.
Thank you.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes, but refuse on CC.
Could you repeat that, please?
Recuse on CC.
CC, thank you. Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes, but I'm recusing on CC.
So noted. Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Mrs. Carino?
Yes.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
And Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Mr. Board President, board action items pass A through XX with the exception of KK, which was tabled. Thank you, sir. That concludes my report.
Thank you. In the interest of time, I will pass the board president's report and move to other board of education business. Anyone?
I do. I do. I sent all the members of the Board of Ed an email about my concerns that's currently before the State Board of Ed. They are in the process of reviewing the graduation requirements for the classes of 2017 and beyond. For the class of 2016, as I mentioned in a previous meeting, that the Education Law Center brought a lawsuit against the New Jersey DOE that these graduation requirements hadn't followed the law. And the follow-up to that was, yes, the judge determined that the New Jersey DOE broke the law by not following proper procedure. As a result of the lawsuit, the New Jersey DOE is giving students in the class of 2016 more options to fulfill graduation requirements. The current proposed regulations regarding graduation requirements for the classes of 2017, 2018, and 2019 also give students multiple pathways to graduation, such as the SAT, the ACT, PARC, Accuplacer, and ASVAB. For the class of 2020 and 2021, students who take all the end-of-year PARC exams and don't meet the graduation cut score, they can then move on to the portfolio appeals process. So in order to meet the portfolio appeals process, the students must take ninth, 10th, and 11th grade PARC. For 2020, there is a paragraph about the commissioner determining another test for graduation, but none has been delineated for the class of 2021. And for...right. So for the 2021, the only pathway to graduation is through the PARC. I have concerns about making PARC the only avenue to graduation, and I'm not advocating getting rid of it. An assessment is required under the federal law overseeing education. I only ask that we ask the New Jersey DOE to create other pathways to graduation. We need to support our students by giving them multiple pathways to graduation, and this doesn't mean lowering the standards. Children learn differently and express themselves differently, and an online test may not be appropriate for every child. This just recognizes that we can measure students' success in multiple ways. That is why I'm making a motion that we have the administration write a resolution for the next Board of Ed meeting to be given to the State Board of Ed requesting additional pathways to graduation similar to the New Jersey School Board Delegate Assembly Resolution passed on May 14th. And I will second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Arminio. Is there any resolution?
No, I'm requesting the administration write a resolution for the next Board of Ed meeting.
I don't think that requires a vote. No, so there's no vote? Any questions, Ms. DeMayo? Okay, thank you. Move on. We're up to our next public forum?
Wait, wait, we have to vote on it.
No, I don't think it's necessary.
She made a motion.
She did?
Yes. And I second.
All right. I couldn't hear.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Absolutely couldn't hear. Okay, we have a motion that's seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Board President?
Yeah.
For the accuracy of the minutes, may I ask Ms. DeMayo to please repeat the motion?
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Because I couldn't hear it either.
We couldn't hear anything down here about any motion.
Okay. I make a motion that we have the administration write a resolution for the next Board of Education meeting to be given to the State Board of Ed requesting additional pathways to graduation similar to the New Jersey School Board's Delegate Assembly Resolution passed at their May 14th, 2016 meeting.
Thank you. And we have a second? Mrs. Koloponowicz? Okay. Any discussion? Yes, Ms. Arminio?
I actually have a question.
Could you talk into the mic? Thank you.
So you're looking to use the content of the New Jersey School Board resolution in this?
As a basis.
And you've indicated that the state is revising some things, and we just don't know what that is yet?
Well, the process is that similar to like policy, they propose these graduation requirements...
No, I got all that.
Oh.
I'm just saying, you're saying that as a result of the lawsuit, the New Jersey DOE is giving students more options to fill, and why would...I mean, I understand your reasoning for a resolution because that's what people are asking for, but if the State DOE is reviewing things, should we not wait for some of those things to come out so we can have...
I don't understand the question.
I'm saying, why can't we have...wait for the State DOE to review their options to fulfill graduation requirements? They're changing some things, right?
Yeah, and they've already been proposed, and they're taking public testimony on it, and so this is the option for us to present a resolution to them because...
So what you're saying is based on the time that they're taking public testimony, you want our board to send something in during that...
By August or September, they're going to finalize the graduation requirements. Does that answer your question?
I'm not sure.
Any other question, comment? Mr. Nostine?
I guess just a point of clarification. Once this resolution is written, then the full board would have to vote on that resolution, right? We're not authorizing a resolution to be written and given to the State BOE. Is that accurate?
No, we're authorizing the administration to write the resolution. We'll vote on it at the next meeting. If it passes, it goes to the State DOE.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll just make one comment, and I think that we all need to think about rigor and standards. I don't think this is what you're referring to, Ms. DeMayo, but I'm just going to bring it up as a point of conversation, really. In today's Star Ledger, I read an article about some states or the movement of students not wanting to take the required graduation exam, so they're using their transcripts and some other alternative assessments portfolios or something. It didn't seem like in those states there was any kind of rigor. We need to make sure that when our students graduate, they don't have to go into remedial classes in college. That's too...I'm seeing that too much from other states. I see states that are, for lack...excuse me, but for lack of a better term, dumbing down their standards, where students that are approaching satisfactory grades as far as meeting standards are getting diplomas. I don't think that's the case here. I just want...I'm just bringing it up as a point of conversation, that I think that's something that we have to be cognizant of. We have to know that our standards are high, and that when our students graduate, they're ready for the world of work, and they're ready for college and not needing to go to remedial classes. Thank you. Okay. Now I think we could vote.
Mrs. Arminio?
It's a tough decision, but I will vote yes.
Thank you. Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mrs. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Mrs. Carino?
Yes.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
I'll abstain.
Thank you. Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Mr. Board President, motion passes.
Thank you. Any other...Mr. Braverman?
Yeah.
I'd like to move that the PTO and PTAs be permitted to use the copy machines in their respective schools. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Kaufman?
I don't necessarily have a problem with the PTOs or PTAs using the school copying machines, as long as it's not during instructional hours, when there are students in the schools and teachers need to use the equipment. It should be on off-hours.
Okay. Any, any other discussion, question? Mr. Nostine?
Yeah, I just have, I guess have some questions. I know there has to be, I think we've had this discussion at BG&amp;T at some point, and I too am an advocate. I think that, you know, that it should be a no cost to the, to the PTAs and the PTOs. They do a huge service to our students, and it's much appreciated by this board, and I know by the parents and the community and also the students. But I do have concerns with taking away building principals' authority. As a building principal, that person is in charge of that building, and they have the right to dictate who uses their equipment, because for all intents and purposes, it is that building principal's equipment at that point. My other concern is, I understand from the information that was given to us at BG&amp;T, some of these copy machines are in highly classified areas, where there may be teacher bins with possibly student grades accessible to, to the parents that may be in there at that moment. And I think that while this is a great idea, I think there are some logistics that need to be figured out, and that is my concerns for this resolution. And I would rather hear input from our district administration, namely Dr. Kozak, on what his thoughts are on this.
Do you want to address that now?
Thank you, Mr. Nostine. This, this topic was discussed several times with our leadership team, our principals, and I agree with what you're saying and what Mr. Braverman's saying, and I certainly recognize the positive contributions of our parents and our PTO and PTA groups. They do wonderful things. They're volunteers. They come in, they volunteer at the time, they work endlessly to, for the kids in the district. And I try to find some sort of a compromise with the building principals with stating that if we change, it's not just the PTO, it's, there's, there are other parent groups that are of consideration. It could be anybody from the band parents to the football club to whoever. Not that anybody asked, but there are different clubs. And I ask the principals to work very closely with the PTO and PTA and to get whatever they needed. I believe there's at least two of the schools or more that the PTO leases copiers, and I ask that, you know, if they needed extra copies, they needed staples and machine, please work with them. They are our partners. I also discussed with the PTO presidents the push to move more to a digital format. As been, as you stated, we have had many problems with our copiers. It's one of the teacher liaison complaints that have come up multiple times, that the copiers don't work, they're getting jammed, and there's just millions of copies being made on the copiers. And as we moved with the Falcon Flyer and other types of things and outside organizations, we tell them that we're not going to distribute paper copies, please send us a, a digital copy, and we'll distribute it via the Falcon Flyer if it's a community-based organization. So we did discuss that to move, could we please move more towards, toward a digital format? And respectfully, the PTO presidents have indicated there are times that they need a parent's signature, and I certainly understand that. And it's not an easy thing to just turn it over. But I would offer again to work with our PTO presidents. I understand the concerns. I would like to resolve it with them, and I would make an open invitation right now. I've already had a discussion today, I believe, with one of our parents, that I would be more than open to meet with them at their convenience as early as tomorrow and try to resolve some of these issues. But you are correct, it's a little bit more of a complicated issue than just simply saying, yes, we can do it. But I do want to emphasize, I do want to work with the PTO, PTA presidents, and the, all the parents, because they are really our partners in education.
Yes, Mr. Nostine?
Yeah, I also have a concern, as Mr. Braverman is a senior member of this board. This to me seems like it's a bit of a micromanagement issue. Our purview up here is to not run the schools, but to see that they, excuse me, to see that they are run well. And that is my concern. I would like to see this, and I will make an amendment to this resolution, that we put this to the Policy Committee to come up with a policy that we can direct the district administration on guidelines how to run this. Do I have a second on that motion for an amendment to this?
Second.
I second.
Can you reiterate? I'm sorry, we are.
What's the amended though?
Yeah, what's the amended motion?
Who was the second?
Okay, I'm sorry, we're, we're up to discussion. I couldn't hear if anyone said a second.
We can't hear.
Could you repeat that, Mr. Nostine? I don't think these monitors are working. Whoever's doing the sound over there, I don't think they're on.
Yeah.
We can't hear.
Anyway, I'd like to amend the current resolution on the, on the floor to send this to Policy, to come up with a policy, along with the district administration, to make a fair and equitable policy for the use of copy machines and printers at the district schools.
Just a point of order, does the person who originates the resolution have to agree to the amendment? I believe that that might.
Mr. Braverman, Mr. Board President?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman, this issue is governed by a use of building policy, and may I recommend that you rescind your resolution allowing Mr. Nostine to take this back to Policy, where I am certain it will find favor?
No, we started that. We did that in October. I was told in October that this was settled. It hasn't been settled, and I just realized that within the last couple of weeks. I would like to say, though, I'd like to amend my motion to include all certified and official parent groups in the district.
Mr. Ryback?
Have a second for that amendment?
Second.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
May I just point out that Mr. Braverman's resolution, as amended, would conflict with the use of building policy?
I, I think, I.
Well, I can amend that to include that we changed the policy.
I think, Mr. Braverman, if you don't mind, I just want to interject one thing. I think what we're saying is that we have a policy here that has to be amended before we can make any kind of resolution now.
It can be taken care of in the motion.
Okay, we have a second on that? Ms. Arminio?
Just as Policy Chair, I'd like to agree with Mr. Braverman that, that the subject has been brought up on several occasions. It hasn't gone anywhere. And if it is his wish, if we can put a date certain that by the next meeting, we have an affirmative policy on this that would satisfy the, the use of facilities and the parent groups. I mean, we, we have been going around on this for quite a while, and there hasn't been a resolve. I would absolutely agree that we need to resolve it. And by, by July, at the next meeting, we should have, we should really have a, a set policy. So everyone is on board with it. I mean, that's up to Mr. Braverman. That would be, just from a policy standpoint.
Any, Mr. Braverman, did you hear what Ms. Arminio was saying?
What did you say about the policy standpoint?
If, if we have a date certain that it has to be resolved by July, the next meeting in July, I said that we've gone all around for quite a while.
Yes.
No, okay, let's take a vote.
That's silly. I mean, just as an aside, I taught for 35 years. In every school I've taught in, in every district I've taught in, the PTA and parent groups have been able to use copy machines, and we thanked them. And when teachers needed to use the machines, they stepped aside. We don't need a labor management decision for this.
Okay, any other discussion? I'd like to say a few words if I can. As a former building principal, I can't tell you how important it was to me to have the PTA, we didn't have PTOs in New York City, but the PTA in our schools. They were an integral part of the school and partners with the administration. I think it's important to recognize that and, and do what we can to help them, and if they need, you know, certainly if they need something copied, that shouldn't be a problem for these organizations. So, that being said, we have a motion. Mr. Lukorski, can you read that motion so people can be clear on what we're voting on?
I'll do my best, sir. The motion is to, at the next Policy Committee meeting, entertain.
No, that's not the motion. The motion is to have, his motion is on the table.
I made a motion.
I thought I heard.
That's right.
That the PTA and parent booster groups that are officially representing kids in this school district be permitted to use copy machines in each of their respective buildings. And the, in the future, the policy should reflect the same.
So, Mr. President, as a point of clarification, should administration ignore the current policy while this, if this motion should pass? Shouldn't the policy be amended first? It would not be objected to by administration, I assure you.
A policy is nothing more than a guide. It's not a law. It's a guide, and it's on the books, and this board has the right to change it now.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I think there was an amendment to that motion, so don't we have to vote on the amendment first?
Yes, we do.
And I thought there was another amendment from Mr. Braverman to his original motion. So you have a motion.
I think we had a motion and two amendments.
Yes.
But, but if I might.
Yes, this is getting a little confusing.
Just, just a, a point of what you said. I have spoken to, and this is in general for policy, Mary Smith, our attorney, has indicated to me that a policy is actually the law, and the regulation is the procedure of that law. So I think factually, you made, you said the opposite. The policy is the law of the district, as, as I understand it, and the regulation is how we proceed through it. So we can't, I don't know about the legality or the.
Well, we don't have an attorney here.
Right.
No, but.
But, but the policy is the law, sir, according to our attorney.
Well, then I guess you should vote appropriately.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I believe that the first motion on the floor still stands and must be voted on. If it's not moved or, or passed, then it can be amended.
Okay, there's no, no further discussion on that first motion. Let's vote on the first.
There was an amendment to Mr. Braverman's motion by Mr. K, by Mr. Nostine, and then Mr. Kaufman seconded.
I think that we have to vote first on the amendment?
Yes.
You need Bob's rules. Should I go get you Bob's rules?
All right, let's take a vote on the.
I have a question.
Yes.
When we talk about using the photocopies, can they use it anytime they want?
Could you say that again?
Can they use the photocopies at any time, or will they be designated at times?
We haven't worked that out yet, and I think that's something that the, they would have to work out with the building principal.
Well, that, but then the resolution doesn't encompass that. I mean, I think the PTOs and the PTAs do a tremendous service to this community, but I am completely uncomfortable usurping the principals. And if they need to put parameters on when the copiers can be used, they should be allowed to do that.
That's why it might be a good idea to bring this to Policy where that all can be worked out.
Well, we can't because we have to vote on this.
Yes. So, first we'll take, we have to vote on Mr. Nostine's amendment? Okay, we're getting a legal opinion. It's getting kind of complicated.
I'll fill in the, the silence, Mr. President.
Are you singing a song?
No, I'm not going to be singing. I think it, depending on the legality of things, I think it's clear from the board that the board wants to cooperate and allow that parents groups and PTOs and PTAs, the ability and access to copy machines. So I think that that statement can be clearly made, just in terms of philosophy.
Yeah, I absolutely agree. It's just a matter of how we're going to proceed.
So I think that everyone clearly wants that to be, you know, available to the PTOs.
Sure.
Ms. Arminio and the board, respectfully, since the date is June 15th, and I guess, Mr. Braverman, with the summer months approaching, it would give us time to work all the details out before the start of the school year. So I don't know if that would have an impact on anyone's decision, but I just wanted to state that.
I don't think you.
We're just waiting. I think we have our legal opinion?
Thank you, thank you. All right, Mr. Board President, I spoke with, I spoke with the board attorney, and she concurred with my recommendation that the original motion made by Mr. Braverman and seconded has to be allowed to be voted on first before it can be amended by a different member of the board. You can rescind your motion if you wish, and then it can be amended by other parties, but right now, your motion's on the floor, sir, as originally made.
So I can call the question.
You could rescind your motion.
You needed an attorney to tell you that?
Mr. Braverman, I gave advice on this, that the attorney confirms, sir.
That's fine, as long as we get these people to use the machines.
Okay, so you're rescinding the mo, all right. So now we can vote on.
Okay, rescind it.
All right, so the original motion is rescinded.
Now the second has to rescind it as well.
There was no, yeah, the original motion is rescinded per Mr. Braverman's request. Is that how it's to be noted in the minutes?
And then the second, whoever seconded is rescinding all.
Very good. So the first motion is now pulled. Would somebody like to make a motion now at this time?
I move.
I will make a motion that we come up with a policy.
Mr. Nostine has the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tom.
I make a motion that we come up with a policy that is all-inclusive, that makes the PTOs and all the parent groups happy, and that we actually include them in the policy discussion, and I request that the Policy Chair will call them in and have them explain the situation in detail. I am on the Policy Committee. Ms. Arminio is the Chair, and that we can finally come to a, a resolution that's satisfactory to everyone.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
I didn't hear him, so can I have some sign language, please?
You want to repeat that inside?
In English.
You want to repeat it from the floor?
We're going to come up with a, a policy at, are you listening, Marv?
You can come up with a policy.
We're going to come up with a policy at, at the Policy Committee that's going to be reflective of what the parent groups need. And we're going to do that with the input of the parent groups, which will be requested to be at this policy meeting to give their input.
And what is the timeline in your motion?
There is no timeline on the motion, but we can def, I will definitely put that. I would like to see this in place by the beginning of the school year.
Got to have a timeline.
I just gave you a timeline.
Oh, no, let's have it by July.
There shouldn't be too much activity in July, so I think that in order to give us a, a chance to get this done, so that we don't come back and say it's not done, I'd much more rather have, that's my motion, September 1st.
If we do it by July. If we do it by July, that's...
You'd have to make an amendment.
I'm sorry? I, I'm sorry, I...
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Mr. Russo seconded.
Mr. Russo seconded. Any discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Okay, we're voting on Mr. Nostine's resolution to take back the policy and have representatives from the PTO and PTA, and I'm paraphrasing, change the existing use-of-building policy to authorize and allow the PTO, PTA's use of the copy machines to be done by 9/116. Did I do that justice?
Very good.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Okay.
Thank you, sir. That wasn't okay.
That wasn't okay.
Mr. Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Mrs. Carino?
Yes.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
And Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Mr. Board President, I'm pleased to announce the motion has unanimously passed.
Thank you.
Mr. Ryback?
I'd like to get that printed out.
Mr. Kaufman?
I have another motion for this Board of Education to consider. This is very important, so I want your full and undivided attention.
Speak clearly into the mic.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
I move that this Board of Education never, ever have a board meeting with this acoustical design again.
I second it.
Outstanding.
Do I have a second?
Aye.
I'll second.
I think you have a unanimous second there.
Do you have a discussion?
Aye.
I'd like to discuss that.
You want to discuss that?
In...
I can't hear you.
In 1959, I know I don't look that old, but I taught in a new school that had terrible acoustics in the auditorium. And for one week, the superintendent of schools took kids into that auditorium at different times of the day with architects and sound people, and by the end of the week, everybody loved the sound. I can tell you that two or three years or four years ago, my community started using this facility for their entertainment. Once a month, they did that. And we found out that if you open the back doors, you don't have the bouncing off the walls like you do now. It's much better, but it's still not terrific.
And I could tell you, when the school opened and we had the ribbon-cutting ceremony, I sat on the stage, and the audio was just as bad then as it is now. For you and the audience, we all sound great. For us up here, you have no idea. I can barely hear Tom, and he's right next to me. It's like sitting in a fishbowl.
If I might add, it's very frustrating when a fellow board member makes a motion, and it's seconded, and the superintendent, myself, and Mr. Gorsky had no idea that anyone made it. We couldn't hear a thing.
How much time did we waste tonight?
Mr. Ryback, I make one comment.
Yes.
Just, if I could, respectfully make one comment, that the acoustics may be difficult for the board members, but I would respectfully say that that in no way is a reflection of our staff members and students who work doing the audio. I think it's more a statement about perhaps the speakers, or the walls, or the sound bouncing off, because, you know, they, I just wanted to make a statement that the staff and students work very hard. So the acoustics were, it is very difficult, I agree.
Just for the sake of time, I imagine there's no more discussion on this. Could we go to a vote on this motion?
This is Mr. Kaufman's motion, never to have a board meeting in such an environment with these acoustics again. Is that satisfied?
Yes.
That's good. Mrs. Arminio?
I'm going to abstain on that.
Abstain?
Yes.
Thank you.
Never, I never say never.
That's recorded as an abstention. Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mrs. De Mayo?
No.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz?
No.
Mr. Nostine?
No.
Mrs. Carino?
No.
Mr. Ryback?
No.
Mr. Russo?
Since this was one of the more humorous meetings, I'll say no.
Thank you. Mr. Rutske?
I'm going to go with no and suggest that Mr. Braverman put his suggestions into use sooner in the meeting. If he knew that the doors being opened would have helped, we should have done that three hours ago.
So no to Mr. Board President, motion fails.
They never ask. Thank you. I'm assuming there's no other Board of Education business, or there, Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes, but this is going to be...
Okay.
But there's no motions involved.
Okay.
I just, we're here for kids, and there's nobody out in the audience, but we're here for kids, and I just want to commend our seniors, because they have been awesome. I was able to attend three recent events, and I know, Mr. Ryback, you attended two with me. As the Board of Ed Rep to the Municipal Recreation Advisory Board, I attended the ninth annual scholarship dinner for some of our senior athletes, and they were honored in the area of sports, lacrosse, cheerleading, soccer, softball, baseball, and basketball. So it was a great night, and many of our students were recognized. Then I would like to commend the high school PTO, who honored our seniors at the annual Senior Scholastic Achievement Dinner at Forts Gate Country Club. It was well-attended, and every year, we have more and more students who are recognized. And finally, the communities of Monroe and Jamesburg honored our students with scholarships and awards in the areas of academics, and sports, and the arts, and music, among many others. So I just want to congratulate all of our award-winning seniors and wish them well, because they will be graduating next Wednesday. And Mr. Tharney, it's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
And we will miss you. That's, that's my report.
Okay. Thank you. Any other Board of Education business? Not seeing anyone? We can move to our public...
As a matter of fact, I have something.
We have someone?
Yes, we had a question in the audience before, and I see that man is left. He asked about moving the election to April. I know it's very unpopular with Boards of Education. I know it's very unpopular with administrators, and particularly business administrators. But I, for one, would like it in April, because I think the public should have the right to have a say directly. And the more, the more it keeps happening in November, the more political it becomes. And not only does it become more political, but you're pushed off to the little side of the ballot, which makes no sense at all. So it's just a comment. I know it's going to go nowhere, but I thought I'd like to say that.
Okay. I do think it might, that might require some legal research, but thank you for bringing it up anyway. Okay, we're up to our second public forum. We, you do not have to speak to the agenda. You can, it's more of an open situation. Is anyone from the public wishing to speak? Mrs. Skirby, you've been waiting very patiently for this second fight. Thank you.
Hi, Tom?
You're all right.
I just want to say thank you for passing that motion. My intention, bringing up the copiers in my original comments earlier, was not to take away any, anything from the building principals. I have worked with the building principals for many years at Oak Tree and Apple Garth, and going over to Barclaybrook Brookside. It was not a debate over, should the principals have the final say? What I was told was it was the Board of Education that was telling them we were not allowed to. So I don't want it to look like I was asking for the board to take away power of the principals. The principal at Barclaybrook and Brookside this year was telling me that it was the Board of Education that said we were not allowed to use the copiers. So I just wanted to be clear with that, that I was not intending for the board to take away the building principals' right to run their buildings. We work very hand-in-hand with our principals. They support us in many ways. Tom, I know you had mentioned about confidentiality. I know that it was mentioned at a Buildings and Grounds meeting, I think, or a policy meeting, that the copiers are in areas where mailboxes are. The PTA has a mailbox with the teachers. We regularly check our mailbox. We are allowed access to that area. So that is not a restricted area, and that should not be a concern for the Board of Education letting us choose the copiers. Most of the copiers in all of the buildings are not located by any mailboxes, anyway. At Brookside, there is a copy room. At Oak Tree, there's a copy room. At Apple Garth, there's a copy room. They are nowhere near the mailboxes, but like I said, the parent groups all have mailboxes alongside of the PTA, and the PTA actually delivers mail to all the teacher mailboxes. So we are in those areas. I look forward to being a part of the discussion when the policy committee does meet. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Okay, not seeing anyone? Oh, wait. Oh, I didn't see you. I'm sorry.
We're back. So once again, we're here representing our daughter, who is currently five years old, not old enough, or does not meet the date requirement to enter into first grade in September. Can everyone hear me?
I really can't hear her.
No. No one.
You know what? Why don't you come down right in the front and talk? Because that microphone, it's, we just can't hear you.
Yeah, but then they can't get it on the record, Steve.
I think she can talk loud enough from there.
So we're here on behalf of Arthur, who has not, who is academically and socially ready for first grade, but because her birthday falls a few months after the October 31st cutoff date, we are now kind of like, you know, waiting, waiting for the testing. Should I start over?
No.
We're good?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
Just give your name and address.
Tracy Valley, and I, we live on...
Your address, yes.
With that said, the determination of the board's decision this evening regarding that testing is going to directly affect whether or not our child will be given that testing. From what I understand, the testing is done in the last two weeks of June, so the school itself is waiting to find out what the board decides. I say for us, as well as other parents that may not be here, but I know that our child is not the only one, that the testing is very important, because it, all children are not the same. And when you have a child that is academically and socially above their grade level, they should be given the opportunity to go to school and be excited and be challenged. At this point, if we're, if our Sadie isn't able to go through the testing and enter into the first grade, kindergarten for her is just going to be repetitive. She's already had kindergarten in private school, and she will be bored. So to keep her challenged and to keep her learning, the testing serves that purpose for children like her. She's reading Dr. Seuss books. She's doing, you know, math on a first and second grade level. She's already learning multiplication. And there are other children, such as Sadie, that are a little bit more advanced. And how do we, you know, as a community, how do we also make sure that those children are being challenged and that they're in the right place in school as well?
Well, first of all, thank you for coming, and thank you for being so patient, for waiting until, for many hours to come up to make your comment. The question of, for any parent or regarding their child in advancing a grade is a complicated one. And I support children being able to move ahead to their potential. I fully support that. I support working where our struggling students, our students who are maybe considered in the middle of the road, and certainly, sometimes, my own personal feeling is that the students who are very advanced are often, not in Monroe, but in general, almost neglected by, you know, a lot of schools, thinking that, you know, that they'll do fine. Now, having said that, I want to speak a little bit about what's offered in the Monroe Township School District. I was in the middle school about a month ago, maybe a little less, and I was in a math class with eighth-grade students. They were outstanding. They were truly outstanding. They were working at a junior level. And the reason, oh, for math, that was a particular class I was in. The reason why I bring that up is that this district offers many, many opportunities for our children to move ahead at their individual level. We promote that in an individualized instruction. The, we do that from kindergarten, really even pre-k, but kindergarten right up through 12th grade. There's a lot to be considered, as I'm sure both of you are aware, and the social-emotional aspects of moving a child ahead. And having dealt with this issue many times with, over the years, with many different parents, and also adults who skipped grades, there is, and there's a body of research on that, and it really can go either way. But students, as they get into high school, and they get into the more complicated areas, even middle school and then high school, they're, if, a student may be very advanced at a young age, but it may not, they may run into complexity, complexities that they're really not prepared for when they get to middle or high school. And I know that the parents, you as parents are very concerned about your child, and we are as well, and we, it's such an important step that you can't make a mistake with that. There's an author, I won't go off too long, but there's an author called Malcolm Gladwell, and he's well-known, he writes for the New York Journal, he's put out a number of books, Tipping Point Blank. There's a book he has called David and Goliath, and he speaks to this matter of the big fish in a little pond. And sometimes, it's better to be the big fish in the little pond, because they do better. And we can use that analogy almost for a student who maybe excels at a young age. I wouldn't want to close the case on this, but I would say that it's a complicated issue. It takes a lot of thought and process. We certainly want to work with our parents. We also have logistical concerns as well, to make sure that, can we accommodate students who move up, you know, space-wise and everything else? Now, that shouldn't be held against a child, so we certainly don't want to do that either. I would invite you to perhaps come in, and we can explore the issue maybe over the summer with Dr. Albeck and myself. I can't guarantee that we could change a policy. Again, it's a very complicated issue, but I certainly don't want to close the door to your concerns.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks again for your patience. Anyone else in the public? I don't want to miss anybody. Okay. Not seeing anyone? We can go to our closed session resolution. Well, let me ask the board, there is no HIV, and we have no, no issues with the superintendent's evaluation. Does anyone on the board still want to go into closed session concerning superintendent's evaluation?
I think if the, I think the superintendent has been waiting, if he wants us to do it, we should finalize it. If not...
Well, I just said, yeah, he just said it.
I didn't even hear.
Oh, you can hear me. Why don't you, why don't you tell them, Dr. Kosak?
I was just saying that I was fine with the evaluation. I wanted to thank the board. I will thank the board publicly for your hard work with my evaluation. I appreciate your feedback. I take your suggestions and recommendations very seriously. And I said to Mr. Ryback, because of the length of this meeting tonight, that, you know, we can discuss this even in July or another time. But I would certainly leave it up to the board if you wanted to have a discussion on this.
I, thank you. On behalf of the board, is anyone, yeah, Ms. Arminio?
I mean, I'm willing to go into closed session. I don't know how the other board members feel.
You want to go into closed session?
I'm not sure. We couldn't hear the conversation.
Okay. Maybe we should do...
You sure vote for that?
All right, let me read the resolution. We'll go into closed session. I don't think we'll be very long, anyway. Be it resolved that the Board of Education Township of Monroe hereby moves to go into closed session in accordance with Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subject, superintendent's evaluation. Following closed session, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the need for confidentiality. as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. We'll be back, and I would say no more than 10 minutes.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
We need a first and a second.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Do I, yes. Do I have a second for that motion? Yes. Any discussion? Everyone, all in favor? Yes.
Aye.
Okay. Our last public forum, anyone from the public? I don't see anybody. So we can move, next scheduled Board of Education meeting is Wednesday, July 27th, 2016, 7:00 p.m., Monroe Township High School.
July 13th is the retreat.
Board retreat.
That's right. The 13th, we have our board retreat. That's right. At the 6 o'clock in the high school, yes.
6 o'clock?
Yeah, 6 o'clock on July 13th. And the 27th is a regular board meeting at 7 o'clock. Now I need a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
Second, Mr. Rutske?
Who was first?
Michelle.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, we're adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.